Could you please stand for the playing of the national anthem? Councilman Remi, would you lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, a true republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
In calling our first meeting to order, we'd like to have Reverend Joel King, who is the newly installed as of today President of the Baptist Minister Alliance here to pray with us. Pastor, welcome back to council.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Yes, sir.
Good evening to all council members. Happy New Year, teachers and staff. And to all our audience this evening. We're so thankful to share with you on this day for your first meeting in 2023. And we ask God to continue to bless this council and the family members and the department heads and their staff that we may have a better year in 23. Father God, we thank you this evening for this opportunity to come before this branch of government as we bless our council president and the other council members and their families, their staff, the department heads, the city's hold, the mayor. We just ask that you put, shower your blessings upon them this year that they have fresh ideas and fresh reasons to make this city a better city in which to live in too. We know we closed two to two with a lot of deaths and killings, but you are still in charge. And we ask you be in charge of this council for 23. And then we ask that you add to the addition of this council that you bless that person that we renamed tonight. That they too will come and be a part of this governing body for this city. That we may be the best city in the state of Ohio, that you can live, move, and have our being through your holy name, we pray this evening, in the name of Jesus Christ, our Lord and Savior. Amen.
Amen.
God bless you.
Thank you, Pastor. Clerk, please call the row.
Bankston, Burrosa de Padilla, Dorans, favor, Remi, President Harden. Any person who takes any actions to obstruct or interfere with the conduct of tonight's meeting may be charged with disturbing a lawful meeting pursuant to Columbus City Code 2317 point 12. Any person who enters those areas of city council chambers reserved for city officials or invited guests may be charged with criminal trespass pursuant to Columbus City Code 2311 point 21.
Can I get a motion to suspend with the reading of the journal? Clerk, please call the row.
Bankston, Burrosa de Padilla, Dorans, favor, Remi, President Harden.
Are there any additions or corrections to the journal? Hearing none, the journal was approved. This week's communication received by the city clerk's office are listed on the agenda and we published in the city bulletin. Are there any other communications to be written to the record?
Not at this time.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The first item of business for council this evening is the appointment of a new member of Columbus City Council to fill the vacated seat of former President Pro Tem Elizabeth Brown. Will the clerk now read into the record President Pro Tem Brown's letter of resignation?
Dated December 19th, 2022, dear Council President Harden, please accept this letter as my formal resignation from my position as council member and President Pro Tem of Columbus City Council on December 31st, 2022. It is with deep gratitude that I reflect upon the past seven years I have served with you on city council. Together, we opened up the capital budget process to be more inclusive of and responsive to neighborhoods across our city. We fought for greater educational possibilities for all Columbus kids, whether through Early Start Columbus or Columbus Promise. We championed safe routes to schools, paid family leave, and equitable tree canopy, and the rights of all youth to toxin-free playing fields. When former President Trump's deportation policies threatened undocumented Columbus families, we secured free legal education and representation. When the COVID-19 pandemic hit low-income Black and Brown families hardest, we funded direct emergency financial assistance. We fought for free speech, rights to militarized Columbus police, and invested in youth and community to make us all safer. Recognizing the obstacles to financial stability that debt, low credit scores, and low wages present, we established a living wage for city job creation projects, funded free one-on-one financial counseling as a public service, and even chartered the course for canceling medical debt for 80,000 people we work for. Along the way unwaveringly, we have stood for reproductive justice by cracking down on harassment outside reproductive health clinics, by providing free menstrual products and city bathrooms, by updating our non-discrimination ordinance to include the protection of all reproductive health choices, and by ceding a $1 million fund for abortion access. Our work together will continue to inspire me to advocate for a more equitable city for all Columbus residents into the future. Thank you for your collaboration, sincerity, and friendship for these seven years. I am proud to have served with you and all my colleagues on council. Sincerely, Elizabeth Brown, Council President Pro Tem.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Before we ask for nominations, I want to personally thank all those who applied for this role, stepping up especially in this environment to serve in elective office or in a office of this magnitude should not be taken lightly. And I could tell by the folks that spoke at our hearing last week that the folks were really committed to service, and for that, I'm very grateful. And while we only are going to be able to appoint one finalist this evening, all finalists, I believe, are prepared to serve our community in many different capacities. So, thank you for participating in this process and working to make our city better. Before I call for a nomination, I do want to outline how this process has worked over the last several weeks. Applicants submitted their resume to council between Tuesday, November 29th and Friday, December 9th. On Wednesday, December 21st, after reviewing all application materials and conducting any individual interviews, each member of council submitted the names of up to three applicants as finalists. The clerk compiled and shared the names of the finalists with the members of council and notified the finalist. On January 3rd last week, council hosted a public hearing to give the finalists and their supporters an opportunity to speak. At the conclusion of that hearing, council entered into executive session to discuss the candidates and public testimony. As we said that night, and it was important, there was no vote taken in executive session. Tonight, council members will nominate an applicant for the vacancy and vote to appoint a new member. If a majority of council members vote to appoint a nominee, the nominee shall then be eligible to be sworn in under oath and take office. I have stated repeatedly since the beginning of this process that it was my hope that we're able to find an experienced public servant who would be willing to serve to the end of President Pro Tem Brown's term and not someone trying to seek election in this upcoming election. I truly appreciate the candidates who stepped forward and know that they all have exciting futures. And really, the city is in good hands because we have so many folks ready to lead. At this time, I'll ask my colleagues, are there any, were there any comments before we call for nominations? Comments before nomination? Sure.
Council President, thank you very much. I just want to say, how exciting is it to have a group of finalists like we had that were all very dedicated and passionate about filling this role? It doesn't always work that way. And so, I am particularly pleased at the caliber and the quality of the finalists that we saw before us last week. Excited that there are people that want to step up in our community to serve and to lead. And so, regardless of who ultimately gets it, I just want to thank all of them for going through the process, stepping up, and letting us know that you're out there willing and ready to serve us in the future. Thank you.
Seeing no other comments at this time, I'd like to open the floor for nominations to fill the vacancy of a member of Columbus City Council. Councilman Remi.
Council President, I would like to nominate Mitchell J. Brown to fill the vacancy for this appointment.
Are there any other nominations to come before council? Hearing none, will the clerk call the row by voice?
Ms. Bankston.
Yes.
Ms. Burrosa de Padilla. Mr. Dorans. Ms. Favor. Mr. Remi. President Harden.
Yes. Well, thank you, and congratulations to councilmember designate Mitchell J. Brown. Councilmember Brown will be sworn in at a later date, so please note for the record that a new President Pro Tem will be elected, and committee assignments will be written to the record at our next regular meeting on January 30th at 5:00 PM. We will now take a five-minute recess, and we will return to continue business in the regular meeting shortly. May I have a motion for recess? Clerk, please call the row.
Bankston, Burrosa de Padilla, Dorans, favor, Remi, President Harden.
We are now in recess. Very shortly, the next two minutes, I'm going to take non-agenda speakers. Reconvene. Clerk, please call the row.
Bankston, Burrosa de Padilla, Brown, or excuse me, Dorans, favor, Remi, President Harden.
Are there any resolutions by members of council, starting with Councilmember Bankston?
Thank you, President Harden. No resolutions this evening, but just one announcement to remind everyone. Next Tuesday, January 17th at 6:00 PM, my office in partnership with the Columbus Department of Development will be hosting a Small Business Committee event titled the Small Business Roundup. The goal of the event is to showcase small and minority business-focused policy and programmatic successes made by the city and the community partners in 2022. And we'll also touch on programs and legislation that small and minority businesses should look forward to in 2023. We have a robust set of small business-focused speakers, presentations lined up from organizations like SBDC, the Columbus Chamber, Columbus Urban League, Freedom Equity, and many others. It will take place at the Ballroom at the Columbus State Conference Center located at 315 Cleveland Avenue. Food and drinks will be provided, and admission is free to the public. This is a really great event. It's an opportunity not only for those organizations that have provided services to talk about their successes, but it's also going to be an opportunity for our small business community to engage with those organizations directly. So if you're interested, please feel free to register on my social media pages, or you can email my legislative aide JP Dorvall at JB as in boy, dorval@columbus.gov for the link. Tickets are limited, and they are going fast, so register today if you're interested. And we look forward to seeing you next Tuesday. That's all I have.
Thank you, councilmember. Seen a lot of good information, a lot of interest for that event, and look forward to attending. Councilmember Burrosa de Padilla.
Nothing for me this evening.
Councilmember Dorans. Councilmember Favor.
Thank you, Council President Harden. First, I want to take this opportunity to acknowledge my legislative assistant, Ms. Anissa Liban, who has accepted a position with the Council on American Islamic Relations as their Policy Affairs Director. She will be leaving city council at the end of this week. Anissa, thank you so much for your work over the past two years to support our residents in such a meaningful way. I know that I probably speak for everyone here at City Hall that we truly can't wait to see all the great things that you're going to do in your new position, and we look forward to working with you in this new capacity. So please join me in congratulating Anissa on her new role. Next, I want to take this opportunity to thank my colleagues, the mayor's office, Columbus City Attorney's Office, the Department of Development, the Department of Neighborhoods, Franklin County, as well as our community partners, such as the Community Shelter Board and Legal Aid, for all of their work over the last few weeks to support the residents and the families at Sawyer Towers. The situation that unfolded on Christmas Day at Sawyer Towers was absolutely devastating. Over 100 families were evacuated from their homes after a pipe burst in freezing conditions. The group of folks that I mentioned above quickly came together to get the families into shelter, secure the building, and take action against the property owners. It was a great example of Columbus coming together to support our residents, and I sincerely thank everyone that volunteered their time and/or donated. I would also like to give a huge shout out and extend our gratitude and appreciation to the Bath and Body Works Foundation, who stood up the call for the need and generously provided toiletries for all of the displaced families at Sawyer Towers. Currently, all of the families are in temporary shelter, and the city, the county, along with key partners, are quickly working to help families obtain permanent shelter. This is an active environmental public nuisance case. With that being said, Director Stevens, is there anything you'd like to add?
President Harden, Chair Favor, members of council, we do appreciate the cooperation, not only amongst the city departments, but our partners within the system, Legal Aid, CSB, and others who have been there with us every step along the way to make sure that we are providing safe, secure housing for those residents.
Thank you, Director, and thank you to your department as well for stepping up to lead the effort. And then finally, I just wanted to wish everyone a happy Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Day. Obviously, we will not be hosting council next week, but this is a day not just as a holiday, but is a day for us to remember and to celebrate the amazing work of Dr. King, his commitment to equality, to justice, to equity, to humanity, and to social change. And we thank him as long as, as well as the other civil rights advocates that have helped to ensure that all folks are created equal in this country. With that, I'll turn it back over to Council President Harden.
Thank you, Councilmember Favor, and thank you for acknowledging Sawyer Towers and all the hard work that went into it. Many councilmembers engaged, were out. Special shout out to Jason Jenkins, who worked, I was on the phone with Christmas, a day after Christmas, and I know he was working on Christmas, and many others. But I just wanted to say thank you to Jason because he's in the room, and many others who worked on this, Hannah Jones as well. Please pass that along. Councilmember.
Thank you, Council President Harden. Yes, absolutely. Thank the chair. It was really one of the greatest things I've seen on council despite the tragedy and what was going on over there. To see the collaboration, thank you, Jason, as Councilwoman said, Joy Bivins, Nana Watson, all of the folks that got involved, police, fire, code enforcement, Humane Society, it went on and on and on. But to see everybody working so collectively together Friday when we finally cleared everything out, I thought was really one of the more remarkable things I've seen on council. And that type of collaboration is what we would like to see on council. And we certainly saw it in full execution, and that is a big lift. So, thank you, Chair, for your help. I want to just invite everybody to join Columbus City Council and Axon's community engagement team tomorrow, Tuesday, January 10th, from 5:00 to 8:00 PM at Marvin's Restaurant and Lounge for our second Share the Table event. These events will offer attendees a close look at the new Axon body cameras used by Columbus Police in discussion with neighbors. Doors will open at 5:00 with dinner and the program to begin at 6:00 PM. There's still time to RSVP, so reach out to Lucy Frank at LJFrank@Columbus.gov. That's Lucy Frank at LJFrank@Columbus.gov to learn more or to RSVP. Thank you so much, and that is all I have this evening.
Thank you, thank you, councilmember. Are there any other comments from elected officials, city attorney's office, auditor's office, treasurer? Seeing none, are there any requests by members of council for the removal of ordinance or resolution consent action portion of the agenda? Seeing none, may we now have a motion to waive reading of titles of 30-day legislation by city clerk? Clerk, please call the row.
Bankston, Burrosa de Padilla, Dorans, favor, Remi, President Harden.
Thank you. Will the clerk now read into the record the ordinance numbers of 30-day legislation on tonight's agenda?
Public Service and Transportation Committee Resolutions 234X, 254X-2022. Finance Committee Ordinance is 3511, 3566-2022. Housing Committee Ordinance is 3579, 3580-2022, and 47-2023. Public Safety Committee Ordinance 3576-2022.
Thank you, thank you, Madam Clerk. I don't see any speakers on first reading. The following ordinance appear on our agenda as consent actions. Will the clerk now read those into the record?
Resolutions of Expression 13X-2023, 263X-2022, 12X-2023. Small and Minority Business Committee Ordinance 74-2023. Public Service and Transportation Committee Resolution 256X-2022, Ordinance 3127-2022. Finance Committee Ordinance is 3457, 3481-2022, and Ordinance is 738, 3941, 46-2023. Recreation and Parks Committee Ordinance is 2974, and 3016, 3020, 3422. Public, excuse me, I said that wrong, 3424-2022. Public Utilities Committee Resolution 238X-2022, Ordinance is 3362, 3369, 3370, 3371, 3375, 3509-2022. Resolution 14X-2023, and Ordinance 22-2023. Criminal Justice and Judiciary Committee Ordinance 9-2023. Health and Human Services Committee Ordinance 3524-2022, Ordinance 11-2023. Environment Committee Ordinance 3516-2022, and Ordinance is 14 and 26-2023. Administration Committee Ordinance 2-2023. Appointments from the mayor's office numbered A0064-2019, A0045-2022, A00123469101113 and 14-2023.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We do have two speakers on the consent portion of the agenda. First speaker to come before council is Mr. Joe Motil, who is speaking on ordinance 3457 in the Finance Committee. Mr. Motil, welcome to council.
Good evening. Joe Motil, 167 West Cook Road, Columbus, Ohio, President Harden, Chair Bankston, members of city council. Why doesn't Columbus's Assistant Plan include any discussion of the requirements in 24 CFR 42.375? Where is the 30-day notification to HUD that a one-for-one unit replacement is not required and that the public must be notified and given 30 days to provide HUD with information supporting or opposing this request? And what about the name and contact information for the person responsible for tracking the replacement of lower-income dwelling units and ensuring that they are provided within the required time? And who is responsible providing relocation payments and assistance to any lower-income person displaced by demolition of any dwelling unit or the conversion of lower-income dwelling units to another use? Stating the Department of Development's Housing Division is responsible for these items does not state who that person is. And what is truly alarming is the difference between HUD's sample assistance plan and the one being adopted tonight. HUD states, and I quote, "Consistent with the goals and objectives of activities assisted under the Act, the jurisdiction will take the following steps to minimize the direct and indirect displacement of persons from their homes," end of quote. And then it gives examples, but specifies that each jurisdiction must determine the actions it will take based on local needs and priorities. Columbus's proposed plan does not list any steps the city will take to minimize the displacement of those in need of low income and truly affordable housing. For instance, it says, "Adopt policies to identify and mitigate displacement resulting from intensive public investment into neighborhoods. Adopt policies which provide reasonable protections for tenants faced with conversion to a condominium or cooperative. Adopt tax assessment policies such as deferred tax payment plans to reduce impact of increasing property taxes assessments on lower-income owners, occupants, or tenants in revitalizing areas. Establish counseling centers to provide homeowners and tenants with information on assistance available to help them remain in their neighborhoods in the face of revitalization pressures." Or one of my many suggestions, create an empty homes tax. If City Hall can find time to pay the owners of the Trolley Barns East Market Private Development for an alley improvement they completed of their own desire, build it to the city, and provided the developer with a $170,000 tax bailout, you could certainly find the time and effort to help minimize displacement of low-income residents from their homes through this particular ordinance. In closing, the assistance plan should not be treated as simply a box to check in order to satisfy HUD. It should set goals and spur action on policy. I would encourage council to actually make plans on how you can minimize displacement, put them in this document as suggested by HUD, and then fund those plans. The point of the assistance plan is to encourage the city to proactively prevent displacement and thereby reduce its costs to support people who are being displaced. The fact that the city has listed absolutely no planned actions to minimize displacement is a failure to our unhoused and those tens of thousands of people who are paying 50% or more of their income toward housing. Our city's failure to implement policies like those listed by HUD have largely impacted our affordable housing crisis, and this allows for an opportunity to change course. So, this ordinance really demands much further discussion and additional requirements if we're really going to get a handle on providing truly affordable housing units, especially for those who are being displaced due to our city's failed policies that fuel gentrification. So I'd ask that you please table this and look into this further. Thank you. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Motil. Are there any questions or comments to Motil specifically? I certainly would want to ask the director to respond to the questions regarding the lack of coordination or connection to the HUD plan that we have before us tonight. Do you have a response to?
Thank you, President Harden, members of council. With this ordinance tonight, we are working with HUD to make sure as we pursue CDBG, state-level CDBG CV dollars, it is, we need to have this in place in order to pursue those dollars. But also, as we receive federal dollars, any displacement that comes through or as a result of projects with federal dollars, we are committing to make sure those individuals are housed as part of that project.
Thank you. Mr. Motil, can I have your written testimony? Because you did go through very specific things that you'd like to see happen. I would like to know if those do or do not happen and how we can.
The very least, if you do pass this tonight, maybe you can amend it. I don't know. But I think this really needs to be looked into further.
Appreciate it.
You're losing an opportunity. You're missing a big opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. The next speaker to come before council is Nate Wilkins. Mr. Wilkins is speaking on ordinance 0041-2023.
1612 Arlington Avenue, Mr. Lothian George Wilkins. I don't know too much about this ordinance, but I will be questioned for more money up to $77,425. I don't have that clarification or something like this, but I would just like to have more clarification by Steve Shoney. But again, I'd just like to see this to be more money to analyze for the community block grant.
Appreciate you, Mr. Wilkins, your support of ordinance 0041-2023. Are there any other questions or comments about the consent portion of the agenda? Seeing none, may we have a motion of approval by voice? Do anybody have a voice? No. Clerk, please call the row.
Bankston, Burrosa de Padilla, Dorans, favor, Remi, President Harden.
Consent portion, actions are approved. The first committee to come before council is the Finance Committee. That committee is chaired by Second Chair. Bankston, councilmember, the floor is yours.
Thank you, President Harden. Tonight in the Finance Committee for a second reading, we have ordinance 3567-2022 to authorize the Director of the Department of Finance and Management to enter into a nonprofit service contract with RIP Medical Debt, to authorize the transfer of $2 million within Recovery Fund, and to authorize the expenditure of up to $2 million from the Recovery Fund. This contract is something to really be extremely excited about and has the potential to positively impact the lives of thousands of residents. I want to thank former President Pro Tem Elizabeth Brown for her work in her spirit that we talked about of her working up to her last meeting she was working on this and something that would be able to basically help a lot of our residents who are dealing with medical debt. But because of the magnitude of this partnership, we think it's beneficial that there are some additional community engagement with stakeholders and nonprofit referenced in the title. Before I move, is there any comments or questions from my colleagues? All right, seeing none, I move to postpone this ordinance until February 6.
Bankston, Burrosa de Padilla, Dorans, favor, Remi, President Harden.
Postpone.
And that is all we have in our committees this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The next committee to come before council is the Public Utilities Committee. Councilmember, the floor is, councilmember Dorans chairs the committee. Councilmember, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Council President. Tonight I have ordinance 3373-2022 to authorize the Director of the Department of Public Utilities to enter a construction contract, complete general construction for the Dublin Road. Road 30-Inch Water Main project in an amount of up to $14,456,962.23 to encumber $2,000 for providing weight services provided by the Department of Public Service, to authorize the appropriation and transfer of $14,456,962.23 from the Water Supply Reserve Fund, the Water Supply revolving loan account fund, to authorize the appropriation and expenditure of $14,456,962.23 within the Water Supply revolving loan account fund, to authorize an expenditure of up to $2,000 within the Water General Obligation Voted Bond Fund, to amend ordinance 1107-2022, which authorizes the Department of Public Utilities to apply for and accepting loan funding from the Water Supply revolving loan account in order to increase the maximum dollar amount of this project loan award, not to exceed amount to $14,700,000, and to amend the 2022 capital improvement budget. Work consists of installation of almost 12,000 feet of new water transmission main lines along Dublin Road. This project will be in coordination with the cities of Hilliard and Dublin as well as Franklin County with the goal of being able to improve water transmission and water tank storage in the northwest part of the distribution system. Do my colleagues have any questions or comments? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla, Doran's favor, Remy President Harden.
Passed.
Thank you. That's all I have in my committees this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The next committee to come before council is the Health and Human Services Committee, chaired by Councilmember favor. Councilmember, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Council President Harden. Tonight in Health and Human Services, we have ordinance 3349-2022 to authorize and direct the Board of Health to accept grant funds from the U.S. Department of Health and Human Services in the amount of $9,025,110 and any additional funds from the Strengthening U.S. Public Health Infrastructure, Workforce, and Data Systems Grant Program, to authorize the appropriation of $9,025,110 and any additional funds from the unappropriated balance of the Health Department Grants Fund, to authorize a city auditor to transfer appropriations between object classics for the CDC Health and Disparities Grant Program and to declare an emergency. The COVID-19 pandemic has had long-lasting impacts on our community in a number of ways. One of the most notable was the pandemic's extreme stress on the health care workforce in the United States. The pandemic has led to workforce shortages in the health care sector as well as increased health care worker burnout, exhaustion, and trauma. These pandemic-related challenges have taken place in a context of significant pre-existing workforce shortages and mild distribution, as well as in a workforce where burnout, stress, and mental health work problems were already significant. The Strengthening U.S. Public Health Infrastructure, Workforce, and Data Systems Grant Program from the CDC aims to provide support for core infrastructure improvements that include workforce foundational capabilities and data infrastructure. A total of $3.14 billion in the Strengthening U.S. Public Health Infrastructure, Workforce, and Data Systems Grant Funds were given to 107 public health departments across all 50 states. Columbus Public Health has received $9,025,110 as the only city eligible to be funded in Ohio. That is to be applauded. This program will provide support for innovative core infrastructure improvements such as workforce retention, training, and hiring for Columbus Public Health. Assistant Health Commissioner, I know that you're pretty passionate about this specific piece of legislation. Do you have anything additional you'd like to add at this time?
Thank you, Chair, favor, Council President Harden and other members of council. We are thrilled for this funding. And you mentioned all the highlights. This is really for retention efforts, recruitment efforts. We want to hire at least four full-time positions, and we're really looking to do innovative ways to increase our workforce development. You summed it up nicely. We're very thrilled to have this.
Thank you, and congratulations to Columbus Public Health for this amazing opportunity.
Thank you.
Are there any questions or comments from my colleagues? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla, Doran's favor, Remy President Harden.
Passed.
Thank you. That's all I have in my committees.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Next committee to come before council is Public Safety Committee. That committee is chaired by Councilmember Remy. Councilmember, the floor is yours.
Thank you very much, Council President Harden. Last month, this council was asked by the City Attorney's Office to object to the liquor licenses of a number of establishments who had countless calls for service, drug activity, crimes, and even murders. In other words, they did not live up to the expectations we have for them to operate in the city of Columbus. As I said at the time, our action was not the end of the discussion, but hopefully an opportunity to begin a deliberative process of creating safety plans and changing the ways that they are doing business in the city of Columbus so that they can continue to operate effectively within our community. Tonight, the following pieces of legislation exemplify the fact that months of work has been done and these businesses have committed to employ best practices in order for the right to continue to operate in the city of Columbus with a liquor license. Before we dive into these resolutions, I'm going to ask Assistant City Attorney Sarah Pomeroy to give a short presentation over the eight resolutions on the agenda tonight for liquor objection withdrawals. Sarah, the floor is yours.
Thank you so much. Council President Harden, Chair Remy, members of council, I appreciate the opportunity to speak to you tonight. As most of you know, I am an Assistant City Attorney with the City Attorney's Office, handling in part the city's liquor objections as well as nuisance abatement cases that deal with our liquor-permitted establishments. Inherent in our work is not just the objections at the end of the year, but it is a year-round process of working with city departments, community members, and the business owners to ensure that our establishments are safe for the community. As Chair Remy mentioned, I was here in December, presented the city's objections, including a handful of outstanding objections that were actually made back in 2021 and that were outstanding still because either we had not reached any sort of resolution or because there had not yet been a hearing scheduled in front of the division. I'm here tonight to present these eight objections, all of which were stemming originally from 2021 and a couple of which we renewed just in December because we have reached agreements with all of these businesses. These agreements, we do not come by these lightly. They are a product of multiple discussions and evaluations by police and fire about the safety at these locations. I'll highlight a couple as we go through, but all of these establishments are now under court orders filed with the Environmental Court that outline procedures for security, lighting, cameras, staff training, and a whole host of other issues, which enables the city to actually, if they start to not follow those orders, bring them back into court through Environmental Court rather than potentially wait again for next fall to do any sort of objection. We have found it's a great middle ground in terms of having a backstop to ensure that safety measures are implemented while also being able to quickly react as incidents potentially happen and address those through the Environmental Court, which obviously our group has been doing for years. So, without delving into every single one, the two that I will highlight because they're somewhat unique that are before you all are, so there's Moments, which is one of, I think it's the second resolution before you all in this lineup tonight. So Moments was at 2545 Petsinger Road. That is an establishment that is the only one of this group that is not currently continuing to operate. The part of the settlement there actually involved working with the property owner, and they are now no longer operating at that location. And that permit, as part of our agreement, is that we would withdraw our objection if they agree to transfer it elsewhere. So, I think that's a good example of how sometimes the solution is for that business to potentially not operate, but we understand permits are valuable and that there is, you know, potential use for that elsewhere. And so this process and the agreed court order there actually allows for that while still ensuring that that business actually is not operating there anymore. The second that I will highlight for everyone is Midway, which operates at 1728 North High. That is one which we had originally objected to back in 2018, got under one of our agreed court orders, had multiple issues with compliance over the last few years, and so we brought an objection at the end of 2021 due to noncompliance on that front. After extensive discussions with management there and actually hearing a relatively smooth football season this past fall with minimal incidents, minimal problems in terms of police and fire at the location, we've actually come to an entirely new court order that still, I think, balances both the city's concerns and their ability to continue to operate. Some of the highlights there are, rather than go into, I guess, specifics about certain procedures, there's a blanket, have to follow city code, has to obey, make sure that there is not a nuisance abatement activity there. So we still retain our ability to potentially bring them back into court if needed. It does simplify how we address noise at that location, so it creates actually a bright-line rule in that court order, basically saying if the noise can be heard past this point, that's a violation. If not, then it's okay. And then the last important thing to note for them is that they've actually committed to redevelop that entire site. So the Midway owners own a parcel that includes both Midway and Ethel and Tank, and there's a space basically in between that is used for various outdoor parties and things like that. And so as part of their agreement, they are required to now go through the process to effectively redevelop the whole site. One of police and fire's main complaints there was sort of the going between the establishments, not no control of that sort of middle area, and so that is now part of this agreement moving forward, and we view it as effectively a reset of this relationship, and we're hopeful moving forward that things will be pretty positive. But other than that, I'm happy to take any questions about the other establishments or anything else that council members may have. Thank you.
Thank you, Assistant City Attorney Sarah Pomeroy. Just to reiterate, somebody falls off the wagon, they don't do what you've asked them to do, what happens next? Just so people understand that.
Yeah, absolutely. So we actually have a detective, Detective Josh Gant, who has been before council before as part of our hearing last year, and he does periodic compliance inspections at each of the locations just to, you know, check in with them. And actually, it helps to start to build a relationship there, too, in case they have questions. If, for whatever reason, they might not be compliant there, or if an incident happens or we've noticed X amount of activity starting to rise at a location, we would then file a motion for contempt in Environmental Court, which would then get set on the court's docket, and there would potentially be a hearing where we would talk about, okay, were they in violation? What are the sanctions for that? The sanctions in Environmental Court can range from fines to full closure of a property, potentially even up to a year under the statute, under nuisance abatement law. So, there's quite a few options there, and obviously we will continue to work with folks, but this is effectively the baseline rules for moving forward.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions or comments from my colleagues about this before I dive into these resolutions? All right, seeing none, I'll thank you very much again for your work on this and appreciate the opportunity to get, you know, these businesses back up and running without objection. So, first I will start with Resolution 3X, 2023, to withdraw the objection to the renewal of liquor permit, 2630352, held by FACRA Inc., doing business as PJ's Grill located at 15 East Framby's Avenue, Columbus, Ohio, 43201, and to declare an emergency. Are there any questions or comments from my colleagues? Seeing none, I move for adoption.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla, Doran's favor, Remy President Harden.
Adopt it.
Next, I have Resolution 4X, 2023, to withdraw the objections to the renewal of liquor permit, number 41801750002, held by J Mac Investments LLC, doing business as Moments Grill and, I'm sorry, Moments Grill and Lounge located at 2545 Petsinger Road, Columbus, Ohio, 43209, and to declare an emergency. Are there any questions or comments from my colleagues? Seeing none, I move for adoption.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla, Doran's favor, Remy President Harden.
Adopt it.
Next, I have Resolutions 5X, 2023, to withdraw the objection to the renewal of liquor permit, number 64304320005, held by 19 East 13 LLC, doing business as Midway on High located at 1728 North High Street, Columbus, Ohio, 43201, and to declare an emergency. Are there any questions or comments? Seeing none, I move for pass, adoption.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla, Doran's favor, Remy President Harden.
Adopt it.
Next, I have Resolution 6X, 2023, to withdraw the objection to the renewal of liquor permit, number 0023900, held by Abdullah Mart Inc., doing business as Saveway Mini Mart located at 2585 West Broad Street, Columbus, Ohio, 43204, and to declare an emergency. Are there any questions or comments from my colleagues? Seeing none, I move for adoption.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla, Doran's favor, Remy President Harden.
Adopt it.
Next, I have Resolution 7X, 2023, to withdraw the objections to the renewal of liquor permit, number 0079740, held by Ahmad's Petroleum Inc., doing business as Sunoco located at 2725 West Broad Street, Columbus, Ohio, 43204, and to declare an emergency. Any questions or comments from my colleagues? Seeing none, I move for adoption.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla, Doran's favor, Remy President Harden.
Adopt it.
Next, I have Resolution 8X, 2023, to withdraw the objections to the renewal of liquor permit, number 84189940430, held by Speedway LLC, doing business as Speedway, number 1216, located at 6175 East Livingston Avenue, Columbus, Ohio, 43232, and to declare an emergency. Any questions or comments from my colleagues? Seeing none, I move for adoption.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla, Doran's favor, Remy President Harden.
Passed.
Next is Resolution 9X, 2023, to withdraw the objections to the renewal of liquor permit, number 91335120649, held by UDF Limited Partnership II, doing business as United Dairy Farmer, 649, located at 530 South Hague Avenue, Columbus, Ohio, 43204, and to declare an emergency. Are there any questions or comments from my colleagues? Seeing none, I move for adoption.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla, Doran's favor, Remy President Harden.
Passed.
And finally, I have Resolution 10X, 2023, to withdraw the objections to the renewal of liquor permit, number 91335120634, held by UDF Limited Partnership II, doing business as United Dairy Farmer, 634, located at 1680 North High Street, Columbus, Ohio, 43201, and to declare an emergency. Are there any questions or comments from my colleagues? Seeing none, I move for adoption.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla, Doran's favor, Remy President Harden.
Thank you.
Adopt it.
Thank you. That is all I have this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Seeing no further business to become for council, is there a motion to adjourn? Just a reminder, happy MLK Day, and council will reconvene on Monday, January 30. Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla, Doran's favor, Remy President Harden.
Meeting is adjourned. We have two more non-